I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, November 20, 2023, to order at this time, and we'll ask our Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, to lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Chairman. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you this evening. We pray for your blessings over this meeting, and we ask that you give the Commissioners wisdom and discernment as they conduct the business of Onslow County. As we approach the pending Thanksgiving holiday season, we thank you for all you've done for us, and for those traveling to be with family and friends, we ask that you grant them a safe journey. God, we pray that all we do this day will bring you honor and glory, and that your will will be done, and we ask these things in your name. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faith, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize and thank the elected officials that have joined us this evening. Alderman from North Topsail Beach, Mr. Rick Grant is here, and our Register of Deeds, Ms. Amiga Jarman is here as well, and then, as always, in the back is our Sheriff, Mr. Chris Thomas. Sheriff Thomas, thanks for being here again. With that being said, I ask that, or we ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited, no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the Agenda. Moving on to Item 1, we need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion approving of the agenda. Now, we need an approval of the items on the consent agenda, or the consent agenda.
So move.
Got a second and a motion, any dis, I mean, second, a motion and a second, any No discussion. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. And we are moving on to public comment, Item 3. Mr. Smitherman?
Mr. Chairman, we have no citizens signed up for this evening's public comment.
Fantastic. Well, we will start first with presentations. Is that Mr. Smitherman on the Festival of Lights, Hanukkah?
Mr. Warren will be presenting this proclamation.
Fantastic. Got you, Mr. Warren.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. We do have one proclamation that has been prepared for this evening, and that is the Festival of Lights, Hanukkah 2023, and I will read that proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Festival of Lights, Hanukkah 2023. Whereas Hanukkah, the Festival of Lights, is a cherished time wherein members of the Jewish community around the world celebrate the military victory, liberating Israel from foreign invaders, and the rededication of the Second Temple in Jerusalem during the 2nd century B.C. And whereas this eight-day festival commencing on the 25th day of the month of Kislev in the Hebrew calendar commemorates the miraculous event where the menorahs' candles burned for eight days on a single day's oil supply. And whereas, the story of Hanukkah also serves as a powerful symbol of the struggle for religious freedom and the enduring strength and perseverance of the Jewish people. And whereas, Onslow County recognizes and appreciates the rich cultural heritage and contributions of its Jewish residents, whose practices and traditions are an integral part of our community's fabric. And whereas, the County of Onslow stands in solidarity with the Jewish community as they light the menorah, which serves as a beacon of hope and inspiration, and celebrates our principles of freedom and justice. And whereas, the County of Onslow further acknowledges the sovereignty and freedom of the country of Israel, established as a homeland for the Jewish people, and celebrates its commitment to democratic values and peace in the Middle East. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the Festival of Lights, Hanukkah, and encourages all citizens to reflect on the historical significance of this festival, the right to religious freedom, and the bonds of friendship with the country of Israel, presented on the 20th day of November, 2023. And Rabbi Altman will accept the proclamation this evening, and the Chairman has requested that Vice Chairman Knapp present the proclamation on behalf of the Board.
So approach mine individual sitting in the audience, something I have to...
Thinking about as well, especially in light of all the troubles in Israel and Hamas, with Hezbollah, the Gaza Strip, everything you could think of. Myself, being a staunch supporter and studier of Israeli history, I think it's very important and it's imperative we do that, to show unity with the Hebrew community. They are part of our community, just like everybody else. And, you know, you see on the news, which gets me sick, you see all the Palestinian groups that are showing antisemitism towards our Jewish population. They're committing atrocities in Gaza, if you've been paying attention. You know, you saw where babies were killed, they're conducting terrorist acts, they still have hostages, and I think it's important for us, as a government of the United States, to stand with Israel. Israel is our closest ally in the Middle East, one of our strongest allies. I've had the privilege of working with Israeli intelligence in my career in the past, and they're just, it's just a wonderful group of people, and their heritage is meant to be celebrated in connection with our Christian holiday of Christmas. And Hanukkah represents that, with the lighting of the menorah on seven days, or one day of oil supply for seven days, it is a miracle. And the fact that it represents freedom is the ideal time to recognize the Jewish community and Rabbi Yerakmeel Altman, he's here to accept this on behalf of his synagogue, and it gives me great honor to finally meet you, to talk with you in person, and I want to proudly present this to you and to your community to show that Onslow County Government stands with the Jewish community, and we stand for freedom as well.
Thank you. I want to thank the Onslow County. I thank you especially for the work you've put in. The world today, you see the number of negative acts that are being done, forget about in the Middle East, but in practically every country in Europe throughout the world, and to have a county that's supportive and wants to help and wants to show support, it's a phenomenal thing for our membership, for the Jewish community. I mean, effectively, I represent the Jewish community in the county, and it's a great honor and a great privilege, but it's also a great amount of work, thinking, and I, this kind of, it gives a lot of physical, a lot of strength to our members. I just want to thank the county for their care and their concern, and look forward to the menorah lighting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.[501.12][501.12](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Knapp, and we'll move into Item 5, Public Hearings, the first of three, and we'll turn those over to you, Mr. Smitherman.
Yes, the first item is Case Number 2023-20, Public Hearing on Lotter Rezoning, and Carter Metcalf will be coming forward to present this matter, and after his presentation, we will open the public hearing for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our distinguished County Commissioners, good evening. The first item, again, is the Lotter Rezoning, P R Z 2023, Number 20. The applicant is Gray Outdoors LLC, and the owners are Mary Lotter and Nancy Pashal. This rezoning came before the Board previously, was on October 2nd, but due to clerical error and miscommunication with the United States Post Office, it is back before you again. We want to make sure that every rezoning coming before the Board meets not only the letter of the law, but also Onslow County processes and policies, so we've ensured that, and that's why it's back before the Board. So, an overview of the request is from RA to RA and HB, or Rural Agriculture, and to Rural Agriculture and Highway Business, so it's proposed split zoning. The tax parcel is 45-28, and it's located off of the Richlands Highway in the Richlands Township. And again, it's proposed split zoning, so the rezoning area is 12.40 acres of the total 120.22 acres. Existing use is farmland. Overview of the services, it is a 12-inch Onwasso waterline along Richlands Highway, with a 12-inch Onwasso water, excuse me, 12-inch Onwasso waterline and a 12-inch Onwasso sewer force main, both along Richlands Highway. Fire service is northeast Onslow, excuse me, northwest Onslow, ISO rating of 5. The traffic count that we have, the most recent one, is from 2019, is 17,000 trips off of Richlands Highway. Staff estimates capacity at 49,000. Schools for the area are Heritage Elementary School, Trexler Middle School, and Richlands Highway. Take a look at the rezoning map. You can see here, the cross-tatched area is the subject area of the rezoning, it's the first 400 or so linear feet across the whole frontage. Now, we'll compare the two zoning districts. First one is Rural Agriculture, or RA, minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, and the purpose of the Rural Agriculture zoning district is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves the agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density, single-family, and limited commercial. Now, compared to the proposed zoning district, which is highway business, has no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along major highway corridors, where there is sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure. Now, we'll take a look at the comprehensive plan. The property is in two categories. The first is agriculture/forestry. This is to preserve large areas in the county that have a high potential to be or are actively being farmed or forested in an economically sustainable manner. The other category it is in is conservation, and this is to accommodate our environmentally sensitive areas, such as those that are fragile, areas of environmental concern, flood plains, and necessary open space of the county. Take a look at this on a map, you can see a majority of the property is in agriculture or forestry, aligning with that existing use of the property, while the eastern end is in conservation. See, we'll take a look at the flood map here, you can see that aligns with that conservation and future land use category, as there are two regulated flood zones on the property, which is the AE, you see that in blue, and then the blue with the white hashing is an AE floodway, this is designated to flood in high flood events, and then the yellow is the 500-year flood zone, which is not regulated. Take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. A proposed rezoning could be considered reasonable due to other commercial zoning in the surrounding area, and is along a major thoroughfare in the county, supported by three policies and comprehensive plan. Summary of those is that Onslow County supports a wide range of commercial options. Could be considered unreasonable because the agriculture/forestry future land use category does not align with highway business, while it does align with the current zoning of rural agriculture. Three policies in the comprehensive plan would not support it, and a summary of those is Onslow County does not support or encourage strip commercialization of its highways. Now, we'll take a look at Planning Board, started October, excuse me, August 24th, and voted unanimously to recommend denial of this request. The applicant spoke on behalf of their request, and one citizen spoke against the rezoning, detailing a concern that any development would be prone to sinkholes, as the adjacent neighborhood is, and it could negatively affect property values there along Farmington Drive. Again, this was initially heard by the Board on October 2nd. Take a look of view of the site. Here you can see this tract is currently agriculture, there with the adjacent neighborhood, and here's what the site looks like from roadside. So it's respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning map amendment, a P R Z 2023, Number 20. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, now, if it's okay with you, we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We have three citizens signed up to speak. Mr. Corey Thomas of Richlands is first.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners on the Board today. Highway 258 has been and will continue to be a critical highway corridor connecting the communities of Onslow County to other cities of North Carolina beyond. Winding River Estates, the small subdivision adjacent to the subject property nestled between the fields welcomes change in the community, but are cautious to welcoming the rezoning of a portion of this field. In 2022, Onslow County Zoning Commission rezoned our neighborhood from RA to R20, which standardized the types of homes our community could house. Now, the county and Gray Outdoors want to rezone a neighboring parcel from residential agriculture to highway business. That could have negative effects on property values. Most importantly, rezoning of that parcel could invite businesses of different magnitudes that do not aid in growth, but cause added traffic and potential safety and security issues for our residents. Growth is inevitable, and we know we cannot dictate what our neighbors do with their properties, but we ask you, the Commissioners, to cautiously consider the ramification of this vote. The businesses of our community do in fact aid the community, but the people of those communities are what make them thrive. The basis of this change request today is for a billboard, but tomorrow it would be for electronic, it could be for an electronic gaming facility, a multifamily dwelling, or a business that would drive the various citizens that desire to call Onslow County home away. The area is inundated with advertising billboards already, 31 between Richlands and Highway 53. The area is inundated with advertising billboards, and adding more will only oversaturate the area. Billboards are seemingly everywhere, even near residential areas. Studies have shown that the closer the proximity to a billboard can drastically change the value of the properties by tens of thousands of dollars, which is why many restrictive covenants in neighborhoods, just as ours, are implementing no billboard policies to protect home values. The placement of our interests is in a dangerous location. Depending on the time of day, exiting onto 258 can be like crossing I-40. A speed limit of 55 to motorists means 65 or 70 in most cases. Changing that parcel to highway business, and subsequently, a business being added there poses a more significant traffic risk due to motorist slowing, preparing to enter that business. I do not have the 2019 AADT study, but in 2009, North Carolina Department of Transportation, along with Holland Consulting Planners, reported that Onslow County has seen an increase as high as 104% in daily traffic counts since 2000 on Onslow County roadways, which 258 was mentioned. This increase, coupled with further increases year over year, is why we, the residents of Winding River Estates, explicitly ask you to vote no on this rezoning. My neighbors and I thank you for the opportunity for our concerns to be heard, and ask that you consider the long-term effects of this vote and help us protect our investments along this critical highway corridor. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Guy Williamson.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm Guy Williamson with Gray Outdoor, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the final speaker is John Pierce.
Good afternoon, Chairman and fellow Commissioners, John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of this rezoning, as I was previously, and we're requesting this rezoning because it meets all the criteria, with the roadway capacity, with the water sewer services, and to be honest with you, I know when I'm getting in the edge of a town, I'm going somewhere, I know we got, everybody's got the cell phones now, or you can Google, but the deal is, I make up my mind a lot of times when I'm traveling, what I'm gonna head, or what I'm gonna get before I get into town, and I think it's advantageous, and I think of all areas, this area is suitable for future growth, and I think it's gonna end up being the highest and best use, because to be quite honest with you, most people don't want to lay their head down on a four-lane highway, and I think it's most utopian, perfect zoning, is try to highway business, some of the lower end, and then residential. But anyhow, like Mr. Williamson said, I'll be here to answer any questions, and I would request that you look at the, I think this is the highest, best use for this property for the future. Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, motion or...
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I had a question. Is it unusual to have an island of highway business in the midst of all this rural agriculture?
There is several places in Onslow County where you can find just little strips or so. You know, the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan encourages kind of comprehensive looks at areas, especially tracks, but it's certainly not uncommon to find it in Onslow County, that along the roadside would be highway business, and then as you got further away from the major roadway, it would transition to a different use, but it's currently not uncommon.
Mr. Metcalf, there are a number of commercial uses that are permitted in RA zone, is that not correct?
Yes, sir. There are several commercial uses that are permitted in rural agriculture. The goal is that they either promote farmland or forestry, or could service that nearby community. For example, we have some areas of the county where there is only rural agriculture zoning, so there are some non-commercial uses designed to help promote certain things in that community. Yes, sir.
I got a question, looking at, sorry. Thank you. It's on. Looking at this map, just out of my curiosity, I see the housing area that the man was talking about, that where you live at, sir, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this 12-acre parcel of land is the only thing that's going, that they're trying to change, correct?
Yes, sir.
Might I add, for what? For what are they gonna use that land for?
I would defer to the applicant for that.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to what you want to put on that section of land, just for my own curiosity, sir, if you would.
Yeah, no problem. So initially, initially, there's gonna be a billboard, after speaking with the owners, Ms. Lotter, Ms. Burke-Bacot, they want to keep the option open to develop it down the road, there's no definite plans at this point in time, but, you know, our plans are to just do one sign, that's it.
Okay, so the billboard, you want to use that for a billboard, so you don't have any projected long-term plans as to what you're gonna put in there, like a little outlet plaza, or, I mean, a convenience store?
That's kind of what it lends itself to, is, as you know, I mean, we're growing in both directions right there. I think the community that you see on the map is kind of the beginning of that sprawl, and there's also very few, like, retail-type strip malls, or fast food, or anything without either going to Jacksonville or to Richland, so I think it lends itself to that.
Are there any future plans, not only for this particular parcel up front, the 12 acres, to expand the rezoning for the land that sits behind it?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you own this land, all of this land?
No, I do not. I represent Ms. Lotter and her sister. It's the Venter's family.
The only concern I have, and I'm just thinking out loud, I see this parcel of land being zoned, and we have no idea what's gonna be zoned, as you look at this picture, it's just agricultural land. It's RA, we want to push it to highway business, I don't know if that would fall into that category in the future, but, I mean, I can understand your plight, if you've got a housing area there, and then all of a sudden, all of this land is subsequently developed into whatever it might be. I was just curious, I was just interested. So right now, it's just for a billboard, correct?
That's correct.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So, motion passes, five to two, if I heard that correctly. How many opposed?
Can the nays raise their hand?
Yep, nays. So two, five, two. Thank you. Move on to the Brinson rezoning now. Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. I want to ask Carter Metcalf, our Planning Director, to come down to present Case 2023, Number 23, which is a Brinson rezoning.
Good evening again, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our distinguished County Commissioners, with the Brinson rezoning request, P R Z 2023, Number 23. The applicant, again, is Gray Outdoors LLC, and the owner is Herman Brinson. Overview of the request, the requested change is from Rural Agriculture, or RA, to Highway Business, or HB. The tax map number is 18-52. Location is off of Beulahville Highway, or Highway 24, still in the Richlands Township. The rezoning area is 2.11 acres, and the existing use of the property is forested, and has some, a vacant residential structure on it. Overview of the services, there is a 6-inch Onwasso waterline along Beulahville Highway, and the property would be served by an individual septic system. The fire service is northwest Onslow, the fire district, ISO rating of 9E. The most recent traffic count we have from 2019 has 9,100 trips along Beulahville Highway, with a staff estimated capacity of 31,700. Schools serving the property would be Heritage Elementary, Trexler Middle School, and Richlands High. Take a look now at the zoning map. See, most of the map is rural agriculture, while there is one highway business property nearby, located at the northwestern intersection of Hall Branch and Beulahville Highway. That location features the J&amp;M Grocery and Tobacco Products Store, as well as Whaley's Auto Mart in front of it. We'll take a look at the district comparison. Rural agriculture, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, and the purpose of that district is to maintain a rural development pattern that preserves that agricultural character of the county while accommodating limited low-density, single-family, and limited commercial uses. While in highway business, there's no minimum lot size, and the purpose of the highway business zoning district is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors, where you have sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure. Take a look at the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan, there are two categories that the property falls in. Rural Residential and Local Commercial Activity Center. Rural Residential, its purpose is to preserve undeveloped or sparsely developed lands that are not agricultural forestry, but they significantly contribute to that recognition or impression of rural character or being in the county. It kind of serves as a gateway between our higher-density areas and our lower-density. Local Commercial Activity Center, its purpose is to accommodate a mix of necessary uses, and it serves as a focal point for that local community in terms of activities and retail trade. The goal is that that would be self-contained, it would not add additional strain on an arterial roadway nearby. Here are the future land use map, you can see in the green is the Local Commercial Activity Center, just kind of centered there along the Hall Branch and Beulahville Highway interchange. Then you have Rural Residential around that, and then Agriculture/Forestry. So I do, it would be a little bit of decrease in density as you went away from that interchange. We'll take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. The proposed rezoning may be considered reasonable due to other commercial zoning in the surrounding area, and highway business is a corresponding zoning district to the Local Commercial Activity Center, as well as Beulahville Highway is a major thoroughfare. Rezoning request is reported by three policies. Summary is that Onslow County supports a wide range of shopping choices for its citizens. The proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable due to the fact that Rural Residential does align with rural agriculture, but would not with highway business. Three policies in the Onslow County Comprehensive Plan that would detract from the rezoning may speak to a lack of a transition to the adjacent residential uses. Here, and Onslow County's Planning Board met on October 5th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning. The applicant spoke on behalf of their request, and no citizens spoke against it. Now, we'll take a look at the aerials. Here you can see the subject property, they are located along Beulahville Highway. See, there's a variety of single-family dwellings nearby, as well as forested land and agricultural land. One with a closer look, see the property is forested, and we'll take a look at that vacant residential structure in a minute, and you can see there at the corner of Hall Branch and Beulahville, in the northwestern corner, that retail location mentioned previously. So the property looks like, if you were driving by, you can see our posted sign, as well as that vacant residential structure. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the... So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of P R Z 2023, number 23, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. Have any comments here from the public?
Yes, sir. We'll open the public hearing and ask that Guy Williamson, again, come to the podium to speak relative to this rezoning request.
It's me again. So this is pretty much carbon copy of the last one. The Brinson family owns farms, several farms in the area. I think what they would plan to do is something very similar. If you looked at the map, there's actually only, like, one retail shop there on the corner in the middle of the future use. It's right on the corner of the future use map. And we initially want to start out with one sign on the corner of the property, and I think there'd be some plans down the road to do, like, a convenience store or something like that. There's actually nothing on the right side of that highway until you get all the way into Richlands. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, the second and final speaker on this rezoning is John Pierce.
I was asked on behalf of Mr. Herman Brinson to come speak tonight. He does, in fact, have the desire to put a sign there, but I would like to bring up the point there again. I think this is very similar in a way. This is the highest and best use. And Herman does plan on offering the property, and he needs it, offers it for retail, and he has got, his mind is set where he wants to future something similar to a Gervania gas station there, because it's, I mean, there's hardly no gas from Beulahville all the way back, and there's none until you get to the Richlands. And I think this is the highest and best use, and it is on the fringe of local community development. And I think that would assist him, putting something there that he needs, and we know Richlands is going up to urban sprawl. And I think this is, now with the main corners that you have, you see the corner was a valuable site, but when the Michigan's left, I see a lot of businesses getting away from the hard corners now, because you've got to go up the road 1,500 feet to turn around and come back, if you want to go to the left. And they call them, the roundabouts is being very popular, and these Michigan lifts are getting real popular too. So I think this makes this a more desirable site than it would have been in the past. And there again, I'm here to answer any questions that y'all may have. Thank you.
And that's the last speaker, sir. We can close the public hearing now.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Of a motion, and a second. Any discussion? And all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So that brings us to our final public hearing. So I guess Mr. Metcalf will be joining us again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I think we should sit on the front row next time, Mr. Metcalf.
Yes, sir. Especially the nights we have three items, we might start doing that. All right, we have the winter 2023 floodplain damage prevention text changes, and this is ZTA 2023, number one, and the applicant is the Onslow County Planning and Development Department. So overview of the request. Staff is requesting modifications to three articles. So first, Article One, Section A statutory authorization. Article Three, Section B, basis for establishing the special flood hazard areas. And then Article Five, Section B, specific standards. And, excuse me, and four section as well, Article Six, Sections A, D, and E. And the floodplain damage prevention ordinance regulates the construction of buildings in these special flood hazard areas. So these are areas that FEMA, through modeling, has identified that flood and storm events. And so we regulate construction in that area to preserve property, and as well as also to preserve life. And so the proposed amendments were generated from our most recent community assistance visit, conducted by the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Emergency and Management Staff. They come in, and they came in on May 4th, and they worked with our staff to review our ordinance, as well as our permitting process, to make sure that we are still following the best practices, and we are. And with this update, our goal is to ensure clarity in our ordinance, as well as also compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. A summary of the policy changes, there's really three bullet points here. So we're going to update the language detailing our statutory authority. So the legislature changed the reference numbers, and we're updating ours to follow suit. Removing any sort of redundancy, specifically referencing adopting new maps. We can kind of already do that automatically. And then we also clarified specific standards for elevated buildings, additions and improvements, and tanks. Succinctly, for elevated buildings, the area where there's piers or piles, that is to be an obstruction-free zone. For additions and improvements, you're to follow the standards for new construction. And then for tanks, such as propane tanks, if they're in the coastal A or VE zones are most strictest zones, they're to be buried or elevated. And that's to protect them from wave action, for example, from a hurricane. So on October 5th, the Onslow County Planning Board met and received a presentation on the proposed amendments, and found them to be reasonable in the public interest, and generally consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. And they voted unanimously to recommend adoption, and no citizens spoke against the proposed changes. So it's respectfully requested that the board be authorizing the chairman to approve the proposed amendment to the floodplain damage prevention ordinance, as well as sign any necessary documents, and adopt a statement of consistency. This concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we'll open the public hearing, and seeing that no one has signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for a decision.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions. First of all, comment to you and your staff. Thank you very much for the overview and background, because there was a lot of Greek that was written in that whole document. I didn't notice anything, and I know I get in the weeds sometimes, but where the flood zones were specifically listed, on page 65, where there's a, as part of the exceptions, it's saying except coastal A, E, and V, just generally, where are those? Do you know, in the county?
Yes. So coastal A is also the, so if you go by, right by the water, the immediate zone right by the ICW would be the VE zone. And that zone is subject to the waves that would come in from a hurricane. And coastal A is immediately following that, because it's susceptible to inundation, so high floodwater, and also the wave action. And then after that, you would have AE, which is, you're just susceptible to water coming into the home, not necessarily the waves. And so those three are typically the transition you see as we get away from the water, but around creeks more inland is where you'll see the AE. Because that means the creek may rise, and some water could come into your home, but it's not going to be waves like you'd see coming off the ocean that we'd have with storm surge.
So basically, it has to do with the proximity to the water? There's not a specific place within, geographical place, but always near the water and then back?
Correct. They take, they look at different models with hurricanes, as well as the individual's property's elevation, because that also has influence on how high the water could rise into a structure.
Thank you. Those, I appreciate the details.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Metcalf, for your work tonight, and we'll move right into item six, the general items, and we are moving to the Medical Reserve Corps grant.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chrissy Hoover, our health director, will be coming forward to present this matter.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The item that I have for you this evening is a Medical Reserve Corps grant that the Onslow County Health Department applied for and was awarded through the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $15,439.52. The purpose of this grant is to bolster the Medical Reserve Corps here in Onslow County. Our Medical Reserve Corps was established in 2003, and it consists of volunteers from various backgrounds, different professions, who would assist us in public health emergencies, and we used MRC volunteers during our mass vaccination efforts. These volunteers also assist with training exercise and are involved in community engagement efforts. This grant award does not require any county match, and primarily, we will be using these funds to recruit additional volunteers with the hopes of getting our Medical Reserve Corps up to 50 individuals, and provide training to the individuals in our Medical Reserve Corps, CPR, Narcan, Stop the Bleed. And so tonight, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider the acceptance of these grant funds in the amount of $15,439.52, and authorize the chairman, vice chairman, and county manager to sign all related documents. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those for you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. So our detention center and medical plan, I believe we have Sheriff Thomas coming up to us.
We actually have Sheriff Thomas coming up for the next three, so we can take a break and turn it over to the good sheriff.
Sheriff?
Good evening. North Carolina General Statute 153A to 25A requires all local government units that operate a jail to have a medical, jail medical plan. The jail medical plan must be reviewed annually and signed by the local health director. This annual agreement between Onslow County Sheriff Chris Thomas and the Onslow County Health Department is the jail medical plan for fiscal year 2023, 2024. It is respectfully requested that the board approve your detention center medical plan, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve. Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sheriff, I know I've asked you about this before, but have you received any further clarification from the state about whether Medicaid expansion will cover the amounts owed from folks that are in the jail?
I'm still trying to find out. Senator Lozaro is also trying to help me find out, as well as the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. We're resourcing it, however, to finalize, apparently to finalize plan for that has not been set in stone yet. So I'm still trying to find out. I hope it does, because as you know, our medical bills can be extremely expensive.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Sheriff?
Now, the next, in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 121A,B and North Carolina General Statute 132.3, the sheriff's office has adopted the retention record and disposition schedule for county sheriff's offices as written by the State Archives of North Carolina. The State Archives require the approval of the sheriff and the Board of County Commissioners. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners adopt Onslow County Sheriff's Office records retention and disposition schedule, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
On November 2nd, 2023, the Onslow County Sheriff's Office received word that the office had been awarded a grant from the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services in the amount of $215,440. Grant funds will assist the sheriff's office in obtaining the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agency, commonly referred to as CALIA, Tier One Accreditation. The program period begins October 1st, 2023, and ends September 30th, 2025. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider and accept into grant funding in the amount of $215,440 for the sheriff's offices, community-oriented policing services, for the purpose of granting and authorizing the county manager to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question, and I meant to call you about this earlier, but I figured the public watch, you might want to know as well. What does this look like? I know there's going to be a great thing for our community, but how will we be able to see it, or how will citizens see the impact of these dollars in this program in our community?
Well, it's really consistency. It's a lot of policy stuff and standardized procedures for the sheriff's office for any law enforcement agency that's been reviewed nationally. It helps us with liability in situations like that, and also guarantees that the citizens get a consistent response from an agency. Those are the primary purposes.
One of the things, Lisa, is that's interesting here is that the standards, and they're interesting, because it's going to take a lot of work. I was at JPD when we went ahead and done the CALIA. It takes a lot of work. You could probably have two or three people working on this. I see you've hired Stacy Leibel. She worked very closely with Mayor Sammy Phillips on CALIA for Jacksonville. Good move. Because it's going to take a lot of work, an awful lot of work for this. The standards are set up, and they have to meet the standards on each one of these different areas. It might be SOD, it might be DWI, whatever, the whole, they have to write a policy on everything in the agency, everything, and it takes a long time. It's a good project, really good project, Lisa.
I appreciate that. Honestly, I think I misread it. I was thinking it meant that there was some kind of community policing that was going to be added to...
No, ma'am. It's the Community Oriented Policing Services grant. It's just, it's the name of the grant funding agency. I have the advantage of when I came into office, we had worked on that prior, and when we came in and started updating our policies, we update all of our policies with accreditation in mind. So we have been working on it, but the Commissioner's correct, it's going to take quite a while to complete it.
Great.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Before you go, Sheriff Thomas, you've got a fine young man that you come here with you tonight. If you'd like to introduce him to those that may not know who he is, but he was here with you tonight.
I would, this is Major Leonard Strong. He is my commander of the detention center. He does a fine job for me, and has been there, how many years, Leonard?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years' service to the citizens of Onslow County, and he does a good job for me, and he is the, he and Ms. Hoover, actually, are the ones that did most of the work for the medical plan.
Fantastic. And we appreciate you coming out here tonight and the work that you've done, and the work that you're doing in that detention center for Onslow County, and what it brings to us, and quite a bit of, quite a bit of things it takes care of for us. So thank you all for what you do. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Smitherman. Looks like we're going to bring up Mr. Bryson.
Yes, sir. He's going to tell us about a grant. He's asking us to authorize.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The item you have before you is a memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Emergency Management for Domestic Preparedness Regent Grant for $7,145. The purpose of this grant is to buy two electrical distribution boxes to go along with our 5500 KW generator that we have, that we can use for power distribution during times of disasters. Now, these power distribution boxes could also be used during times we have events and fairs, and other stuff that we can go along with. One thing I do want to make sure we clarify with is the money this is coming from is from their fiscal year 2021. We were already approved for these items to be from their 2025-year grant, but they caught us with money left over in 2021 and asked us, could we go ahead and move forward to go ahead and buy these items, so we'd go ahead and have them, they could spend other monies in the 2025 year. We respectfully requesting the Board of Commissioners to consider accepting the Domestic Preparedness Regent Grant for two power distribution kits. If approved, we also respectfully request the chairman to authorize the county manager to sign the memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Emergency Management.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And then we will continue on with, I think, our Port Health Services contract for the Veteran Treatment Center, and Jennifer Bumgarner is coming up to the podium for us.
Couldn't say it better myself.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Onslow County was awarded a federal grant by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA, for expansion of the Onslow County Veterans Treatment Court. The Board of Commissioners accepted this grant on October 2nd, 2023. As part of the grant-funded activities, Port Health Services will provide an onsite community supervision coordinator that will provide substance use and mental health services to Onslow County Veterans Treatment Court participants. Port Health Services will also provide Medication-Assisted Treatment, or MAT. This is a five-year contract in the amount of $133,289 per fiscal year. The contract covers cost of salaries and supervision as required by the North Carolina regulations, and supplies for the Medication-Assisted Treatment, or MAT. It is respectfully requested the Onslow County Board of Commissioners consider approval of the five-year contract with Port Health Services in the amount of $666,445, and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? It's my understanding that the Veterans Treatment Court is funded by the state. Is that correct?
We have, Veronica, can you come up and help me speak as well?
Veronica's helping to manage, she's actually the one that's going to be helping to manage and oversee these grants for Kerry.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Yes, so Veterans Treatment Court is funded partially by the state, and then they have received two federal grants.
Okay, so the state budget is for a two-year cycle, so what would happen if the state didn't reauthorize the funding of the Veterans Treatment Court?
They would have to apply for more funding, but this particular contract is being covered by our federal grant.
They would, they would continue to offer the services that are written specifically in the grant. So any, any services that are being provided by the state would be outside of what's being provided by the grants.
So this is separate from the court itself? It's the treatment that will continue?
Yeah, it's enhancing what the state is...
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't connected to that.
Same programs, same people. It's helping to pay for some of their salaries.
Yes, so the federal grant, the SAMSA grant, covers the treatment to expand medication-assisted treatment and the position itself for Port Health. The AOC funds, which are the state-awarded funds, cover other costs, and that covered a lot of what it costs to start Veterans Treatment Court in Onslow County.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none. Those, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. As we're going back and forth here, Mr. Smitherman, I'm going to move right on to the Swansboro Tourism Grant, and if I get this correct, Mr. Warren's going to run this one for us.
You have good instincts, Mr. Chairman.
We're on it, we're on it.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. The town of Swansboro recently began preparations for the construction of their boardwalk extension and public DDoD project to provide opportunities for public waterfront access and expansion of the White Oak River walking trail along the downtown waterfront area. When they began the construction process, there was a section of the bulkhead along the downtown waterfront area that began to collapse. The town was able to install a series of pilings to stabilize that until further repair could, could take place, and since that time, they've engaged an engineer to get cost estimates and the necessary permits. The total cost of the project is estimated to be $101,450. The town has reached out to the Swansboro Tourism Development Authority and received $12,500 in tourism funds, and they've requested the same from the county. So it's respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider allocating tourism funds in the amount of $12,500 to the town of Swansboro for replacement of the damaged bulkhead, and authorize the chairman to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Smitherman, we'll move over to budget amendments.
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce our new...
Department Director Lisa Marlin, who's going to present a budget amendment to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present the following budget amendments for your consideration and approval this evening. Item B32 is a request from emergency services to increase revenues and expenditures by $7,145 for the DHS DPR grant accepted earlier this evening on Agenda Item 6E. Item B33 is a request from the Health Department to increase revenues and expenditures by a total of $15,439.52 for the Medical Reserve Corps grant accepted earlier this evening on Agenda Item 6A. Item B34 is a request from the airport to increase revenues and expenses by $4,055 to utilize insurance settlement funds to pay for a repair to the fire station bay door. Item B35 is a request from emergency services to increase revenues and expenditures by $1,448.50 to utilize a donation from Mission Barbecue for county emergency services employee recognition. And item B36 is a request from the sheriff's office to increase revenues and expenditures by a total of $215,440 for the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services grant that was just accepted on Agenda Item 6D. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the listed budget amendments, and I would be happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time for some appointments, Mr. Smitherman.
Yes, sir. This evening, you are presented a name to fill a two-year term on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. That is Terrence Barber. We received an application for seat number 13. The term will expire on June 30th of 2025.
All in favor of the motion?
Motion to approve.
There we go. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. No consent agenda items, and we'll move right to item nine, managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three quick items. I was reminded this evening when the major for our detention center appeared, how much I enjoyed reviewing that facility and getting a tour and seeing how well it is run. It reminds me of his predecessor, who I cannot remember his name, he was there forever, and was here 15 years ago, and ran an outstanding jail in very challenging circumstances. And today, we have slightly better circumstances, but it's still challenging to run a jail, and we do a really, really good job in Sheriff Thomas's department. Also had the pleasure of engaging with the economic development community, particularly JoEd, its leadership and its board, last week, and was very glad to be briefed on their activities and look forward to being an active participant in that organization. And then my final comment for this evening, which is somewhat redundant, but it's, it's never too often to reinforce, that we care about our employees' opinion and value their comments on how we run this organization. And beginning as early as next week, the middle of next week, we will begin a series of bidirectional communications with our employees. We've already enhanced our weekly employee newsletter, for lack of a better term, but beginning next week, we will ask their opinion on what it's like to work for Onslow County, and we will be doing a survey that every employee can participate in. It will be the baseline that your executive leadership team uses to advance the organization, and we will measure ourselves year over year with our employees' feedback on how they think we're doing. And this is just the beginning of a very concerted effort to ensure that we are a workplace of choice, and that our employees recommend this organization as a place to work, and that they feel like their opinion and their work effort is appreciated. And that's all I have for this evening. I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Commissioner Bennett, we'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I wish you all a very safe and happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scott?
Well, Commissioner Bennett said it, is Thanksgiving is Thursday. Please be aware of your surroundings, love each other, and I hope to see you very soon in the next two weeks, but really take care of each other and be thankful for what we have, and I appreciate that, and a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Price?
Pleased to attend the Blue Star and the Gold Star Memorial dedication down at Sneets Ferry at the Branch Library down there today, to acknowledge the role that veterans and their families have played, and those who fought and defended our country, and so that was a nice event. And also this afternoon, we went to the ribbon cutting for the Boys and Girls Club at Trexler Middle School that's being reopened after it had been closed during COVID and some of the problems they encountered there. So it's good to see that expanding more opportunities for working with kids in the middle school level there as well. This week, we did have some Zoom meetings. I'm sure that, did you guys have Zoom meetings as well? We're opened up to the various steering committees. We began to look at education and workforce development, so that was some good stuff as well, and we'll, we'll have some in-person meetings, I believe, toward January. But other than that, have a great day and an outstanding Thanksgiving, and enjoy time with family. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Buchanan?
I want to thank everybody for being here and have a nice Thanksgiving, but one thing I want to say is, I got asked the other day by this new manager that we have, and he says, what do you think about giving up your offices? I said, it's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer. We don't use them that much. And I got escorted out of my office, I think, last Thursday. Angie escorted me out. I'm just joking. She helped me get my stuff out of the office so I could put it in my truck and take it home, put it in my office at home. You're hitting the ground running, and you said it a while ago about our employees, this is going to be a big help to our employees to use those offices that we don't use very much, and we want to thank you for doing that. It's just a great thing for our employees again. It's, it's all about our employees, and I don't mind giving up the space. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Commissioner Carpenter?
It's really hard to be the almost last person and come up with anything unique, but...
We'll make Commissioner Carpenter first next time.
Don't just... No, it's great to have Mark go ahead of me because he always reminds me of things that I, I was trying to brainstorm of, but I had the pleasure of participating in the very first Zoom call with the Tax and Finance Committee for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, learned a lot of very great information, which I think is going to add to my own knowledge, as well as hopefully that I can share with the rest of the board. And I, too, was at the dedication for the Blue Star and Gold Star Memorial this morning, and it was a lovely event, and I just am very, very grateful for all of our military who are active currently, retired, families that have served alongside of their, their active-duty members, and also the families that have experienced the loss of a member that was in service and lost their lives. So I just, I'm very grateful for, for the community that we have within our community that serves us the way that they do and guarantees our freedom. But other than that, happy Thanksgiving. I wish all of you a great time with your family and friends, and those that mean so much to you, and have a good week.
Thank you, Commissioner Carper. Vice Chairman Neff?
Just a couple of things. Dave, first, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that you're my landlord, you're kicking us out, but I just had to find out, and I had to find out here on the dais, like, that's why my chair is out of my, no. I think that's a great idea. I concur with, I mean, we rarely use that office, you know, just to hang up something. It's, it's office space that's needed by the employees, and they come first, and I agree with Commissioner Buchanan. There's absolutely no need for us to have those offices, and well done. Speaking of which, I want to thank you, and I want to thank Janelle. Had an issue last week, not a big issue, but with Animal Control. Received a complaint from a private citizen, referenced some abandoned dogs in the, in the resident, and they haven't seen the owner in about a week. And of course, Mr. Gabbert from Animal Control responded. I saw the email chain that you were sending me directly, which is perfect. You guys jumped on it, you took care of it. I appreciate that, and it turned out to be a non-issue. But at least we were out there, and, because we had some other concerned citizens about it, but they've been briefed, and rest assured, they're okay, and they appreciate the effort. And I just want to say thank you for jumping on that. That was, that was a good team effort. I appreciate it. You saw Pastor, Rabbi Yerakmuel Altman, you know, he's a, he's a unique character, and you know, he's, he has a local Jewish population that he pastors over, if you will, as a rabbi. And you know, one of the things that we talked about is, the festival of lights is, is in celebration and in support of the Jewish people, but it's also a time for freedom, and that includes Palestinians. The Palestinians that are peaceful Palestinians that are living in coexistence with the Israelis peacefully. You know, all the trauma that you hear, the terrorist acts, things like that, you have to realize that it's in Gaza, which is occupied primarily by the Palestinians, with some Jewish settlements there. It's not the Palestinian people, it's the Hamas terrorists that have a control over the Palestinian people, and they're trying to coexist. And I think what he did in his message, trying to incorporate them, I think that's very noteworthy of him. He's obviously a very peaceful man, and you know, you got to keep in mind that Hamas, who is backed by Iran, and Israel is Iran's number-one enemy, and the United States are number-two. So we have to make sure that we stand in defense of our, our neighboring allies. The Israelis are a tough people. You know, we don't want to see the likes of what happened in World War II ever happen again, and to be honest with you, this antisemitism that's going around this country is pathetic. It actually makes me sick when I watch the news, but I watch it anyway so I can see what's going on and try to absorb the facts. So, you know, this, this call for the Festival of Lights and the lighting of the menorah is a symbol for peace, and it's a symbol of freedom, and I really appreciate him and his group reaching out to me to do this type of proclamation. It's something I have been thinking about anyway, but we need to show our solidarity for, for the country of Israel. There is no doubt. And if you want to argue with me about that offline, I'd be more than happy to take your questions. Other than that, the, we had the Christmas parade. It was warm. I remember last year, it was freezing, and, and we kind of did something really weird without even communicating with each other. We looked like Mutt and Jeff. We both had our green commissioner shirts on, and I had to get up in the morning, and I didn't have anything really festive, so I figured, okay, I'll wear the green one, and apparently you had the same, the same thought process, so we kind of looked, guys don't dress alike, okay? That's just not what we do. But apparently, we were there in the parade for all those people to see, Mutt and Jeff in green shirts, but it was, it was a good time. I loved it. It was more, there were more people at this parade than I can recall in the last four or five years. It was packed. As soon as we came out of the school, it was packed, and everywhere, as you went down Western Boulevard, there were crowds and crowds of people, and I think the weather had to do a great, great deal of, had a, had a great deal to do with that. But anyway, have a safe Thanksgiving, folks. Some of you are traveling. Please be safe, but remember, you know, when you're eating, you're celebrating your time with your family, your loved ones, to be thankful for what you have. Be thankful for the blessings that, that are in your life, and just think, just remember this, if you feel that you're having problems or the world's against you, there's always someone else that's in more dire need than you, and you need to be thankful and show a humble heart, and I just want to say, have a safe trip, enjoy your family, God bless you, and hopefully we'll see all of you back next week.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I think you heard a lot of information on where many of the commissioners have been over the last week or so, different events. You may not see all of us there, but you will see commissioners there representing Onslow County, several events today, that, I think, starting the day out with the Blue Star and Gold Star Highway down in Sneets Ferry, and then over at Trexler Middle School with the Boys and Girls Club. So you see that there's so much going on in Onslow County, and quite often, you hear the connections with the military population, active duty, as well as our veterans. It hasn't always been such a active and well orchestrated machine in Onslow County, but over the last 20 years or so, this, this community has become one community between our municipalities and the military population, whether active or veteran, and they are part, it's a fabric, and we are all interwoven, and we work together to create a Onslow County that is very bright and very successful. As I was speaking to one Marine that was in the parade, his name left me, but he's about to retire, and he was glad to make it back here, and this is where he's going to, to retire, to Onslow County. So used to, this was a place that they said they didn't want to, to come to. Now, as they come and spend a tour here, then they pin this on their map, this is where I want to retire, and it's because this community has become such an interwoven fabric of togetherness and success. And I think Saturday morning was evident of that at the, the parade, the number of, And I think Saturday morning was evident of that at the parade, the number of, of our active-duty Marines and what they represent are veteran organizations, the elected officials, the different businesses that support the community. It's impressive. And that's what makes Onslow County such a fine and a well-oiled machine that everyone wants to be a part of. And that's, that's because of the people that work in county government and the municipalities. And what they do is to create an atmosphere of, of success, a place to live, work, and raise your family. The money that's brought in through grants and what it's operating for the county and saving the taxpayers of Onslow County lots of money. If you just list the amount of money that was coming to Onslow County in grants tonight alone is unheard of. The final, final thought is the organizations that we go out and support each year with our nonprofit money, Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, that money is, is, the return on investment is extremely, just out of this world. What we're able to do with what little we give to these organizations, they bring back to us 10, 20-fold of the, of the difference they make in the community between those organizations. So hats off to the work that's done to get grants and putting that in the motion and supporting this, this community. And with that being said, we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and be very thankful, not only you're in the, the greatest nation in the world, but you're a part of the greatest state in this nation, and obviously, the number-one county in the state of North Carolina. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. And I ask for a call. We are adjourned.